Can you stand to say the pledge? Pledge of the reasonable student's right to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with the standing of one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance. There's a guy out of Lake County who considers himself the expert on the pledge. And so every time I say the pledge with him, it's "One nation under God," not "One nation pause." So, and he has to correct me every time I say the pledge.
He is conductor, keep us all in the same cadence.
I know. You know? Anyway, so, um...
The first thing is me.
You're doing the financials?
Well, it's financials that I approved. Pursuits of the motion approved December fourteenth to authorize me to execute on a case of lack of quorum of commissioners and/or sessions canceled on a regular financial day or on a day where financials need to be approved. Request approvals for county financials on behalf of the board for the year 2015 as authorized by O R C three oh five point three zero. And there were two financials that had to go through today. I had a supplemental appropriation for the engineers' maintenance road fund to appropriate for the issue two road projects and carryover balance, and the auditors' G O note retirement fund for the loan payment for the engineers' Ohio Development Services Agency equipment loan. And then there was also a cash transfer related to that from the engineers' maintenance fund to the auditors' G O note retirement fund, the engineers' loan payment, in the amount of fifty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Don't need to do anything else, I'm just reporting what I have to.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the budget summit of page fifteen, which is passing in fifteen.
A move.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye. Make my seat for my last name. Is it somebody from the county home, or?
No, I am, I said, told Karen I would stand in because all that's going on here is Micah Klein, who's been a very good employee for the county, originally in the maintenance department, moved to the county home, has gone on a position to kind of move up the career ladder. So, he is resigning effective May first, and then we're going to be asking the board to then grant permission to advertise for a position of full-time attendant on the third shift.
The county home is requesting the board accept the resignation of Micah Klein, full-time senior candidate to be effective May first, two thousand and fifteen. The county home is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for a position of full-time attendant number fifteen on fourth, third shift, this position will remain posted until felt.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller. Commissioner Claypool.
Aye. And just for, as an FYI, I've talked to Dave a little bit, I don't know if he's mentioned anything to you guys or not, but these resignations, we don't really have an option in those. We approve them, they have to be approved in some way, shape, or form. So, I asked him if there was not some administrative way to handle those, so we're not spending time in these meetings on something administrative like this. So, you just handle those from a technical perspective, either having one of us sign on, or Dave sign on, and we approve that. So, he's going to be looking into it.
And I raise a question with Laura, there's a section of code specific to what the county administrator can do, so I've asked her to look into whether that's the only option, or whether there's other options the board might prefer to having that handled, but that way maybe not have all this detail going through on routine stuff and tying up time or session.
I've tried turning down some of the resignations, but nobody's been willing to accept it, so.
The only, the only advantage you have in a mon there that I see is that then the one following it.
Makes sense.
Advertising for, to hire someone is self-explanatory. It's not, it's not like, "Oh, they're adding people left and right," you know, and it's not the case, we're replacing someone, but that may not be that big a deal, I just see that being the only negative.
Yeah, and we could, and we could mention, I mean, ask them to look into it, we don't have to do it, it's up to you.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just, you know, being the devil's advocate here going, "Oh, yeah, they're hiring people."
I mean, we spend time reading through those, and we outside of goofing around with them a little bit, we never turn them down, so, wouldn't do us any good if we did.
Well, how do you turn somebody down that says they quit?
There you go. No, you can't, you have to stay at work. Maybe in some countries we let this one. So, we have morning coming up. Welcome.
I go in.
Morning.
Morning, morning.
Or evening.
It's been a long day for you.
It's been one of those days. You know, Saturday, we had some problem down at the safety center, with some power outage down there, so it kind of knocked us out. Trying to get the UPS, we found some problems today with that, so trying to get that back up, and we had a breaker go on that, so they're overnighting a new breaker for us.
Is that the one we just bought?
Yeah.
That UPS that we just bought last year?
Yep.
And it's already got a problem?
Yep, so it's all under warranty, which is great, so they were out today, they're probably be out tomorrow, so we'll get that all, so we're just praying that Lewis Squirrel don't run across the power line and take the power out tonight, so we'll take a small break soon enough. Be piling down there, so I think we'll be all right. Um, this, we're here for Paul Davis restoration to remove wallpaper in the courthouse. This is going to be about on the first floor and probably about thirty percent of the second floor that wasn't renovated about ten years ago. I think this is really going to be great, if you've been up there and seen the wallpaper up there, it's kind of in bad shape in a lot of places and everything. I think what we plan on doing is taking that wallpaper all off and repainting, and I think that's going to give the courthouse, especially on the first floor, Judge Ferry's office, courtroom, second floor up there, it's really going to brighten that up a whole lot up there for them, so I'm really excited.
You're removing a lot of historic feeling, though. You go into those rooms, there's that smell of all of the history that goes through here and all that stuff, so I'm going to miss that.
I'll make sure that we keep a piece of that wallpaper for you, and frame it and put it in your office.
In a bag and give it to them.
And this is coming out of a side frame, like?
Correct.
Right, so it's not going to have a general frame.
So, it's not coming out of our general fund money or anything like that, so I'm really excited about this and get it going, and with Paul, Jeff Suzinksky, if we run into any small major problems, he's got the capability of getting it all fixed, and, you know, up there, you're going to have problems with the smell or something going on, so he's got the proper fans, the ventilation and everything to keep us going and that the whole works. A lot of this is going to be at night, I mean, on the weekends, but we need to ventilate that and get that all going, so that the workers, employees can come in the next day.
Fully knowing that I'm going to aggravate someone and they'll be mad at me, uh, who picked out the colors for the new paint?
I, I, all I say in this county is neutral colors.
No, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we didn't get some, some art, art school graduate that wants to paint him some...
Purple, or whatever.
Whatever color they think is in, you know, vogue today, supposed to be some...
I think we've learned that up there.
Okay.
We let them do that in one office, and they came back, and, you know, employees moved, and they didn't like that color, and it's really hard to repaint it.
We're not doing camel or anything.
Well, I wanted navy gray, but...
And how long has that wallpaper been up there?
Oh, it's a long time.
Only forty years. So, give me the amount of time it takes us to, to wallpaper and stuff, and change of our decor and all that. I'm glad you're going with the neutral colors.
I'm really excited about this project, so, along with the judge and everybody, so...
Doesn't take much to get you excited.
No.
Full night's sleep will get them excited, that doesn't happen very often.
No, and a whole weekend off would be nice, too, but...
Yeah.
The maintenance department is requesting the board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Paul Davis Restoration to remove wallpaper, restore and paint designated areas at the Joga County Courthouse for the year two thousand and fifteen, in an amount that would exceed twenty-five thousand three hundred and five dollars and seventy-six cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Aye. I visited you guys down the bottom of the recorder's office yesterday.
I was informed of that.
Interesting, man.
They, they were waiting for you to come back.
Were they? Yeah, I told them I showed up and keep company.
Good morning, Kathy.
Good afternoon, good evening, Kathy.
This is a little bit weird.
I'll run through them all until I get the right one. Good evening.
Oh, good evening.
Kathy's, now forget those.
Yeah, there you go. I'm going to decide across and...
It's just you.
You don't have the red sticker on you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I use general.
This is all me, though, right?
It's all you.
It's all me, Kathy.
Okie dokie.
Don't worry about these two days, just talking to me.
Okay, so anyway, I am here to talk about the Employee Assistance Program. We have this program through the Cleveland Clinic. Dave and I remember when we were looking at the quotes and looking at the people who came in, we really liked the Cleveland Clinic because the counselors, well, basically, let me back up, it's predominantly a referral and counseling service that we offer our employees and anyone living in their household. It's been utilized a lot in the county, five years ago when we looked into this, we really liked the Cleveland Clinic because their counselors were actual employees of the clinic, so we thought there was more accountability, and the level of counseling was probably better, too. We haven't gotten any, many negatives about the counseling, you know, we've gotten more positives. We use this service for our, also we use it for our supervisors, managers, elected officials, for any kind of formal referrals, and I was talking to Commissioner Claypool about this lively conversation this afternoon, because a lot of times, employees, you have a really good employee, and they start kind of slipping a bit, and you don't know what's going on, and you're hearing through the grapevine that they're having some issues, and supervisors don't really, maybe not necessarily want to get involved with those personal issues. So, this is an excellent tool for a suggestion for the employee to go and get eight free counseling sessions per issue, and, you know, it gets people back on track, everybody needs a little help once and again. Occasionally, supervisors also use a formal referral, and that is in the disciplinary process, if an employee is really struggling, say, we should say, for example, anger management, they kind of highly suggest, very much suggest that the employee go, and all the supervisor sees at that point is that the employee is following the plan. Because I know, one of our commissioners in particular was asking about studies, and I know he loves studies, I'd like to also pass these out. And this is, oh, leave it in, get you all of them, something, something, yeah. Do you have the study one, the big thick one? I think it's to Christie.
I have to have mine down, so I don't have.
Okay, there you go.
Oh, thank you.
And basically, what they put together for us is, they've, they've looked at Joga County, and then they've looked at different studies that have been done over the years as to the effectiveness of an employee assistance program. And I personally think that the E A P that we have is a much more progressive employee assistance program. A lot of times, you kind of sign up, and people forget about it, and you're paying fifteen thousand nine, three hundred dollars a year, and for nothing. And what we do here at the county is we make them very visible, at our Health and Wellness Expo, they're going to be very visible, very participating in that, they talk to our employees, they are very instrumental in bringing wellness and the wellness coaching, that's a part of the employee assistance program. So, I think it's been a really successful program here at the county. Not only is it free counseling session for, say, personal issues, but we also have a half an hour worth of legal advice, which if you have a very, maybe you want to do a living will, you have a little fender bender, you need a little advice, you can call and get free legal advice. Also, financial planning is involved in that as well. All the employee has to do is to call the number and tell them that they're a Joga County employee, and they will refer them to the right counselor. Sometimes it just takes a telephone consult, but sometimes the employee needs to come in. It also includes family counseling, if you're having issues with your children, you can, the whole family can go. But they go on this marital counseling, on most plans, on most medical plans, you, marital counseling is not covered, it is under our E A P, and that's another thing as well. Back in the day, when we would look at our claims experience, they would break out mental health issues versus medical issues, they don't do that any longer, but when they did, Sebco's remark always was that our, those issues were minimal because people were utilizing our employee assistance program instead. And so, that also takes off money from our premium for medical costs as well. So, I think it's kind of a win-win for everybody. We have five hundred eighty...
Do a quick calculation, can you define for the audience E A P?
Employee Assistance Program.
And what, and give them a summary of what that is.
The summary is that it's basically a, it's, it's an assistance program for employees who have more personal issues, and they would be provided with eight free counseling sessions per issue for anyone, for them, and for anyone in their household. So, it's, it's, it's an advantage, it's also a tool for our supervisors to use as well.
And it's important because?
It's important because we want our employees to be happy, healthy and productive employees, and it also comes back on our premium costs. Is that right, Commissioner?
The last one. Can you guess who asked for all this information?
And that's fine, because I believe in it, it wasn't, wasn't hard getting it.
Nothing. What's that?
That was fine, because it's, it's, it's an easy...
Well, I've learned some very interesting things as I'm sitting here looking at this. What is GERD?
Okay, now you're going to stop.
You got anxiety, back and neck pain, GERD, allergies, other cancers?
Gastrointestinal reflux. That's for, acid reflux, I think.
Yeah, I believe, I think it is.
I think that's a, a term for...
Say it.
Gastrointestinal reflux disease.
There you go.
Thank you.
Wow.
And I'm not a doctor.
Yes, thank you.
Did you just eat a halibut last night?
I love the light on, too.
Question.
I'm impressed.
I'm impressed.
I think of interest is this little comprehensive thing we did, the report highlights on page seven of this one, this one. It basically says that the top four issues here in Joga County, that they're utilizing services for, and I want to reiterate, we never do see who is utilizing it, we see how many are, so we can make an informed decision about whether it's worth it to keep offering programs. And what they do is they, they identify the issues, but they don't identify the people ever. So, the first one is depression, the second one is stress, the third one is psychological concerns, and the fourth one is marital counseling. And they're noting here that only one case was actually, had to be referred onto our medical plan, and that four hundred and forty-two individuals were serviced through the E A P through utilization of counseling services, daily living services, management consultations, health fairs and onsite seminars and events over the last year.
We always seem to have a higher than average utilization, we choose to think that's a good thing, but some might say what's driving the employees to be there or not.
From, from the employees who have chosen to share with me, their experience has been positive, from the elected officials and directors who have chosen to share their experience from their formal referrals, it's been extremely positive as well. So, I personally think that this, we should continue on, and I think that it's a good benefit for the employee. Also includes our part-timers, although the Cleveland Clinic only charges us for five hundred and eighty-nine full-timers, they also will service or give counseling sessions to part-timers, seasonals and temporary employees, they just don't charge us, that was some negotiation skills, so that's more like eight hundred employees.
Good, thank you.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the services agreement between Cleveland Clinic Wellness Enterprise LLC and Joga County for Lifestyle and Employee Assistance Program, Lifestyle E A P for the period May first, two thousand and fifteen through April thirty, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of twenty-six dollars per covering employee per ba, per year based on five hundred and eighty-nine full-time employees.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Good job, Kathy. You did a nice job.
Thank you.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board concur with Chester Township Trustees in that requesting a hearing on the liquor license requested by P P Small Dollar Incorporated Doing Businesses, meaning Food Mart located at one two seven 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 Tillicopy Road, Chester, L C, T R F O six nine five two five nine zero.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool.
Mr. Jackson.
How are you?
Good.
Very good, good to see you.
Is that Michael?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you're a man.
Thank you for giving us this audience. My name's Phil Jackson, I am the current president of the Joga County Historical Society. The society, as you can read, I have given you an outline of what I'm going to talk about, I don't know how much detail you wish, but in any event, the society has been around since eighteen seventy-three, was active for a couple decades, and then kind of faded away, and revived in nineteen thirty-eight, and obtained its first property in nineteen forty-one through the assistance of Francis P. Holden. Our operations for the last two years, and into the first four months of this year, have been without an executive director. That means that the Board of Directors is not only conducting the regularly expected duties of the Board of Directors, but we also are managing the property on a day-to-day basis, and the reason we have no executive director is a financial necessity. The actual personnel of the society, we have two full-time employees, we have a maintenance supervisor and a business office manager. We have two part-time employees who work twenty or hours, twenty or more hours per week, one is an assistant to the maintenance manager, and the other is a store manager. And then we have twelve interpreters who provide both public and school tours, and one very minimally used housekeeper. All the other activities at the society are undertaken by volunteers. We have many, many volunteers, about a hundred and twenty, I think were identified in two thousand and fourteen, we just had our volunteer appreciation dinner last Saturday, and had about, almost eighty people, we've done that, so. In addition to employees who work our festivals and serve as docents and assistants in very many ways, we have a number of people who give fifty, seventy-five, a hundred hours, and we actually have five volunteers who gave up for five hundred dollars last, each to the society last year. We are a nonprofit, five oh one C three charitable corporation, the officers and directors are not paid, the Board of Directors meets monthly, and the executive committee does as well. We are a membership organization, as such, we offer memberships to individuals, couples, families, corporations, et cetera. We do operate under an annual budget, we begin the year with an attempt to begin with a balanced budget, and then work toward that goal as we go forward. Our primary expenses after wages for, and benefits for employees are utilities, the expenses of putting on events, the cost of running a store, insurance coverage for two dozen buildings and property, our farm operations, the maintenance of those buildings, and the maintenance of the grounds. Now, our revenue comes from the events that we hold, from the store sales, from membership fees, A O D H partner support, and by that, we actually seek sponsorship from corporations and individuals to sponsor individual buildings on the grounds, and then that money is put into a maintenance pool, so we can maintain buildings collectively. We also seek donations through annual funds, requests, et cetera. We do, do tours, probably run better than three thousand students on school tours, over the course of the year, and then on weekends, and we've extended it into a couple days a week, we do public tours as well. Your support, as certainly a system of, sort of, years, we do rent one residential property that we own, and we rent the Bond Building, which is our activities building, as well as the church and the grounds, for private organizations, private individuals to use for wedding parties, receptions, raffles, whatever they choose to. We also make maple syrup and apple butter, and we do have some farming come from the racing events, and the summer is great. Last year, our community activities included, and there's a list there, about a dozen or more items, I would like to particularly point out our Pioneer School, which is, last year was its forty-second year, the Antique Power Exhibition or Power Show, which was the forty-fifth year, and our Apple Butter Festival, which just had its sixty-fifth annual event. Last year, we did a couple first-time events, we had a wedding gown exhibit that was put on by a textile committee, we had a rib burn off, and we did an out, out and abitee, those were all fundraisers, in addition to the other items you see there. I mentioned the volunteers, the volunteers work on new and continuing projects. Last year, we did a complete interior renovation, restaging the Bowden House, which is one of the residential buildings on the grounds. We did a complete interior renovation, restaging the Bainbridge Store, which is a commercial depiction of the old Bainbridge Store from the township. We completed the exterior renovation and repainting of the Hitchcock House, including a complete replacement of the siding on one of the side of the building, we remounted the siding ourselves. We did the majority of the same sort of work on the Cook House, we have one part of one wall to finish up this year. On the corporate side, we revised the constitution, the bylaws, and we updated the responsibilities of working committees, and we have, I believe, sixteen working committees that do the various tasks of the board. We made some structural repairs to the White Barn, which is one of our storage facilities, and one of the oldest buildings on the grounds. We relocated some gas and water lines, and we're very pleased to announce that we did complete the build-out of the maple syrup production area in the Maple Museum, and we actually boiled it this spring, so we ceased using the old Sugar House down the hill, and for the first time we used it, which is one-third of the Maple Museum. And we, the first time ever, pumped the sap up, up the hill, but we did boil it by the traditional name, which we will continue to do. Our two thousand and fifteen schedule of community activities is somewhat similar to last year. Instead of doing a rib burn off, we were actually doing our Civil War encampment this year, which is really bringing back what we've done in the past, but we had not done it for the past several years. We think we have an agreement with Lake County Historical Society, we're going to, we're going to all eliminate this event every other year, they did it last year, we'll do it this year. It's significant this year because this is the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the last year of the Civil War, so. We also have a special textile exhibit, it's called Night on the Town, that will involve display of gay nineties and roaring twenties costumes and nighttime night fashions from our collection, and I think it's a, probably a pretty well-kept secret that we have an excellent textile collection, with its clothing, samplers, quilts, and, and other forms of cloth products. So, we're bringing out this one particular genre this year. We'll continue with our traditional major events of Pioneer School, and Antique Power Exhibition, Raccoon County Music Festival, Apple Butter Festival, and the other speaker series, school tours, et cetera. Our objectives for this year as far as the, the work of the volunteers, we will continue on the Maple Museum project, in fact, we had nice coverage today in the Joga County Maple Leaf, because we are in pursuit of three barn boards to line the interior of the building with the older style boards, to make it look like the interior of the Sugar House. We're also going to continue to work on the Cobble Shed project, the Cook House is the oldest residential house we have on the grounds, and it has attached to it an old shed, and since Mailman Cook was, at various times in his life, a shoemaker, we're going to make that into a cobble shed. And then, we have a building that has stood vacant for a couple years, that we are converting to actually a multipurpose building, we call it the Apothecary, but it will not only have an old-fashioned drugstore in it, it will have the former office equipment of Dr. Corey, and it'll have a history of the Medical Society of Joga County. One of our major objectives is to attain a balanced budget, and we also hope to increase membership. At one time, the Historical Society had about seven hundred members when... One of our major objectives is to attain a balanced budget. And we also hope to increase membership. At one time, the Historical Society had about seven hundred members. We're now down to about half of that. And that's just a trend of the times with all historical groups. We're trying to reverse that and build our membership back up again. And we're also seeking sponsorship for our various events. And then our educational side, I mentioned the tours that we do on the grounds. What we're hoping to do is expand that to be able to take it to locations. And we call that the Traveling Trunk Program, which means we put a batch of antiques into some sort of portable mechanism and take it to schools, nursing homes, et cetera, and have our interpreters actually do a presentation at their site rather than our site. And then one of the issues we've had is many, many people, in fact, I think it's the vast majority of the Joga County population, don't know we exist. We've talked about how long we've been there. We have a sixty-five acre site. We have twenty-four century-old buildings. But I would think if you ask ten people in Joga County where we are and what we are, most of them would not know we exist. So one of our goals is to increase our awareness both through media outlets and through outreach programs to get our name out there. Not that it's been hidden, it just maybe hasn't been promoted as much as possible. And with that, we would like to request that you continue to support us financially. We do have that money counted in our balance budget, but we recognize that that's the issue. Do you have any questions?
I didn't see on the list here how many board members you have. Did I miss that?
We have the authorization of twenty-one board members and we currently have sixteen, no, fifteen, excuse me.
And how are they appointed or-
We have a Board Development Committee that actually searches for board members. And we are currently actually working with Leadership Joga to identify some younger blood for that purpose. And we've identified a number of people that we are currently talking. We are looking for people who have an interest in history, some time to give, and a willingness to provide us their mental and activity support.
You answered the question, the last thing you said, you answered the question. I was gonna ask, how many acres were there? You said about sixty-five.
We farm about thirty of that.
I was gonna say, the developed area would encompass, probably not, maybe a little less than half of that?
I'd say a third, the commons and the buildings.
Can I, I don't know if you have some time when this meeting's over?
I can stay around it.
I'd like to have a conversation with you if I could.
Sure.
And if you brought a card, please do not-
I'll put this in the card.
I can write down your number and stuff.
Can I ask a question? During my time up here, I always sensed there was a more of, I would say, divide, but not a close association with Joga Tourism. How would you characterize your relationship today to that group?
We do work with Tourism and Linda and certainly use them for promotion and, in the case of Beck, at one time, we even talked about having them move on to our property.
Right.
But, no, I don't think there's any animosity. We do try to work together with all the counties.
'Cause my concern always was, we're giving to both these groups or they then turn around and spending dollars individually that they might collaborate on and spend together.
No, we use Linda extensively, or Joga Tourism extensively, to get our messages out.
I think it's a great service. You guys, you know, put on a nice little shell there. It's really neat. You know, my daughter did the Pioneer School last year and got a lot of, you know, had a lot of fun with that. A lot of introduction to a lot of stuff that you just take for granted with the cell phones today.
Nice cue. I was interested to hear him refer to having, picking up Dr. Corey's equipment. For those people who don't know, Dr. Corey was a legend here in Joga County. He was one of the founders of Joga Hospital. And the Corey Hospital's right, the building was right here in Chardon. But he was the epitome of the old country doctor making house calls. I know my wife, when she was young, had a fairly medical, a fairly severe medical challenge and he would come down to my mom's house and treat her right there. We've lost that kind of service and it's great to maintain the memory of all the good things he did.
One of the issues that I view the Historical Society has that you can't do anything about is where it's located, right on the corner. It's like, when you're coming up there, I'm more concerned I don't get in a traffic accident. So I'm paying attention and I don't ever, I won't say don't ever, but I very seldom look over there and take it in. I did take the opportunity last year to go to an event and walk through there and it's kind of a jewel in the county, I think. It's just that, like I say, it's there and there's oncoming traffic. You know, when I'm driving, I worry about getting corked. But I, I personally believe in the mission there, so.
We would certainly offer you a private tour if you would wish. Ralph and I did one last year, but if anyone wants it, we certainly would do that. We do have a lot to show. It's, we've been blessed by many people donating many wonderful antiques as well as buildings. And we've, I think, over the last several years, we've staged them very, very wonderfully. Good presentations and keep working at it.
That Civil War encampment, what kind of participation does that-
Well, we, again, because there was a gap since we last did it. We're having, not a struggle, but we're, we don't have an exact number yet of number of reenactors. I doubt it'll be where it was ten years ago. But we will have dozens of reenactors, maybe not hundreds, okay. We will have, we will open up a number of the houses. We've already put together our Civil War display, which is actually quite extensive, surprisingly. We have a lot of artifacts from the Civil War period, a lot of information on individual soldiers and their circumstances. Plus, as you're probably aware, we also have an excellent collection of guns, military guns from early on through the Civil War up to the world wars. And so we will have both the gun room open and we will have the display room next to it open with our Civil War artifacts.
You have to do this in-
Just wait Memorial Day weekend.
Memorial Day weekend.
On Saturday and Sunday. We do not interfere with the-
I saw it, I saw it in the paper and can't remember the dates anymore.
And one of the interesting things about Joga County, our population then was about fifteen thousand people. We had two thousand people who served in the Civil War and three hundred died in battle or deceased.
I know when you go around to, on Memorial Day, to the various cemeteries that have a plaque honoring the war dead, it's always kind of surprising to me when I get to that part of the plaque and I, wow, a lot of people there.
We supply full companies to several departments.
Pretty good. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Dave, you did a good job.
Okay, that's all of the agenda items. Upcoming meetings. We've got the twenty-sixth, the Maple Festival, well, actually, the twenty-third today through the twenty-sixth, the Maple Festival. Commissioner's gonna hold a regular session on the twenty-eighth. Portage County Detention Center, business is gonna be on the twenty-eighth. CIC, Community Improvement Corporation, Annual Salute to Business and Industry on the thirtieth. The Commissioners are gonna hold a regular session at nine. NOAC is gonna have a Finance, Governance, and Executive Committee, that's all Blake, on the eighth.
Two of them.
He didn't react to that.
He did last one.
I was trying to jab a little bit there and he didn't react.
About the last two, so I don't have to get up at the crack of dawn to get to that first.
That's right. They don't let us on the finance because we're too conservative.
And on the twelfth, the Commissioners are gonna hold a regular session at nine o'clock. And with that?
Thank everyone for coming.
I appreciate everybody coming out today on a wintry, chilly, snowy-
We couldn't go to the Maple Fest, we came here.
Yeah, they, they needed to schedule, they needed to leave it where it was, the date-wise, because ever since they moved it, the date that it was scheduled, would have been scheduled.
Right.
I think predominantly, those weekends are better than the ones that they have it on, but they didn't ask me. I moved to adjourn.